Good evening and welcome. Oh, I got a wave, sorry. There we go. The AV folks hate me for that. This is a joint meeting of Lewisville City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission. Called special meeting at 6:00 PM. We do have a forum. We don't have any e-commerce comments that I'm aware of from the Internet for our public discourse, and we're ready to go with our workshop session.
I want to order the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then join with City Council.
All right. Good evening. We have a forum. Sorry. Good evening, Council. Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission. Michelle Berry, Planning Manager. Thank you all for your time this evening. We're getting close to the end of the Business 121 corridor plan process, and so we wanted to bring you guys together tonight to kind of show you what we've done since we last met. And then also, what we really wanted to focus on this meeting was really getting the fine tuning and your feedback and direction on the priority goals and strategies. I know we sent this out last week, but that's not a lot of time, but it's fairly dense. So Kendall is our consultant, and she'll be walking you through a presentation today. It is a fairly dense presentation, so we're going to kind of fly through the first part of it so we can really focus on those goals and strategies, and then we'll make sure we know what are the key priorities that we want to focus the most of our staff effort on.
Thanks, Michelle, and good evening, everyone. So as Michelle mentioned, we're going to touch on some quick project updates. We did do a virtual town hall earlier in the summer, and then I think you guys have seen early versions of the catalytic sites, so we're going to update you on that. But then the bulk of this meeting will be to review the recommendations. So just as a reminder where we've been, we started this process late last summer. We've done extensive existing conditions analysis, as well as some engagement with folks along the corridor, and also some citywide engagement opportunities. We've also drafted draft recommendations and done some scenario planning with the catalytic site. So we are at the final phase of this process, which is pulling everything together. Staff does have a draft report that they're in the process of reviewing, but again, we want to, before we finalize everything, we want to review the draft recommendations with you all this evening. So I mentioned we did a virtual town hall. Michaela will touch on some of the key findings from that, but essentially, it was an interactive website that was live for about two weeks, so anyone could go and take a look and provide feedback. It was advertised through various methods. There were about over 700 total visits to the site, which was a pretty good hit rate. There were slightly fewer survey responses, but I think the feedback that we got was quality. There was also sites available both English and Spanish, so there was multilingual opportunities there. And so Michaela's going to touch on some of those key findings.
Yeah, great, thanks. Hi, everyone. Hi, I'm Michaela. And I'll talk a little bit about the sentiments that we got back from the plan. When we asked people to prioritize the 12 goals that we put together, rank them, give us their earnest reactions to what we're putting forth, we heard a lot about green, transforming this into a neighborhood-like street, something that reflected where they lived nearby. A lot of people mentioned music and community in general. I think people were really looking forward to seeing more about the goals and some of the catalytic sites that you'll see. So the main thing that stood out, really, was that everyone wants to talk about safety. I don't think that's shocking, but what I thought was interesting was that when people ranked safety and then provided open form comments, what they actually talked about was pedestrian safety. They talked about traffic safety, lighting, the way that the road feels. I think there was a sense that the way that the road feels is also about how the road is used, which is really interconnected. And with that said, there's also a very close connection to the curb appeal, and that was the most important, that was the highest priority element for a lot of people who responded to our survey. And I think that also reflects how there's a strong connection between the city's ability to improve the streetscape quality and how people perceive that. Jumping into the catalytic sites, we'll talk first about Mill Street. Mill Street being the gateway and the connector between 121 and Old Town looks at a lot of streetscape improvements, looking at new kind of a walkable typology that doesn't quite exist on 121, that is still retail, and then transforming the intersection at 121 and Mill Street into a gateway. What that actually could look like, based on some of the realignment planning and some of the site planning that we have done, is really actually leading in and inviting people into the space, creating wider right-of-ways, sidewalks, dedicated spaces for people to go to sit, and just acknowledging that we can do things like add crossings to make that a more comfortable walk for people who are going to walk there. We ran all of the scenarios that we'll talk through through a program called ARC Urban to look at a couple of key metrics. We wanted to track things like property value, water usage, other environmental statistics, and how people will use it. One thing to point out on this is that adding retail and preserving some buildings for new retail and adaptive reuse adds about 3,000 trips to the site every day. And I'll talk through some of the different types of metrics on the other plans. Lakeland and Bel Air Plaza has two scenarios. One really just adds infill retail on Business 121, where retail is positioned to be the most successful, and then adds other elements that make it more easily connected to pedestrians who need to go to the stores in there and are walking. And what this does is adds about 50,000 square feet of retail and offers some ideas on where that retail could have new programming that could be including communities, kind of private-public open space, infill a niche goal that's also elsewhere in this project. The second scenario does all of those things, but it also explores adding about 140 town homes to the site, which was the one thing that we did feel was very consistent among people who participated throughout the course of the plan, that they wanted to talk about housing and what it would look like for housing to be added to 121. And what that does is also just add more opportunities to talk about how we could activate some of the parking lots, make them more accessible, and then, again, use some of the place-making, like tactical improvements, like painting crosswalks to call attention to the fact that people are walking there. And what we learned from that is that it 400% or 500% increases the property value. It doesn't much more so increase external water use, maybe a couple, three or four times more on some of the infrastructural elements, but really adds about $60 million in value to the site. The last site is simpler improvements. It looks at taking on Southwest Parkway Plaza some of that green space and turning it into an active space where pop-ups can take place, looking at making facade improvements and signage improvements to the site. And what that might look like is something like this, having a farmer's market, which is, again, one of the many other goals for the project, and food trucks, and just inviting people from the community, knowing that they're already going there and that we could make that experience better. Probably the only key element of this is that it wouldn't be as significant. It was one of the lighter-touch options of all the scenarios, and it still more than doubles the property value and the property tax revenue. Breathe through catalytic sites. Going to do the same and start us off with some of our key goals and recommendations.
All right. Thanks, Michaela. So I mentioned we do have a draft report that is being reviewed currently, and so just to give you a preview of what that report looks like, there's four overall chapters. The first one gives an overview of the planning context, why this study's being done, and some of the existing conditions that were discovered through this process. The second chapter focuses on the recommendations. So those are grouped by three things: mobility, quality of place, and economic vitality. So those correspond with the overall vision statement that was created for this plan. The third chapter reviews the information that Michaela just went through on the catalytic sites. So it includes those preferred scenarios and concept plans of how those sites could be redeveloped in the future. And then the fourth chapter focuses on implementation, so we'll dive into that a little bit later, but essentially, looking at next steps and partners and timeframes for implementing the strategies that are addressed in this plan. And then there are several technical appendices as well that provide some more technical detail. So the overall corridor framework recommendations are made up of three main components. The first is the corridor future development vision. So what this map is showing is a vision for potential growth and redevelopment along the corridor. So we used a character-based approach to this future land use exercise, which that just means that instead of just looking at land use, we also took into account the look and feel of these areas as well. And so through this process, each of these colors represent different place types or land uses, and we developed associated parameters that were fed into the ARC Urban model that Michaela alluded to. So the place types reflect both existing stable uses that we anticipate to remain in the future, as well as uses or areas of change that we anticipate changing in the future. So that's the first main component. The second graphic here shows the overall corridor concept plan. So I mentioned those three key elements: mobility, quality of place, and economic vitality. This is providing a spatial representation of some of the primary recommendations that we're making. So I'll just touch on a few things, looking at some roadway changes and then also some key changes in the central part of the corridor. So you can see there's a lot of activity in this area. That's where there's the densest concentration of both commercial and then also residential. And also where we see, where we found that there's the most concentrations of bicycle and pedestrian accidents, the most pedestrian activity, as well as vehicular accidents. So we'll touch on the safety elements here in a little bit, but this graphic is showing how all of those mobility, economic, and neighborhood investment improvements kind of come together. And then the final component, which is the most robust, is all the different corridor strategies. So overall, there are 12 goals that are incorporated into this plan, and under each goal are a series of strategies. So the next several slides where Michaela and I are going to tag team to talk through some of the key components of these overall goals of the plan.
Yeah, thanks. So this first one really is about adding the human-scale elements. These strategies are the ones that add the green, add the neighborhood kind of character back into the road. Because people are, there's many more car users, but there are many, many pedestrians, and because of those tensions, the way that people have, will continue to use the road on foot means that it is dangerous at worst and uncomfortable at best. There's a lack of tree canopy, things that we went over, I think, previously, but are worth mentioning. And so talking about all of these things, as well as sidewalks, buffers, adding more crossings, and talking seriously about traffic calming on the road can help slow down cars to get into businesses, it can help those pedestrians, and it can reflect the neighborhood a little bit more. Some of this will happen on private property, and some of it will happen on the right-of-way in Business 121. So that means working with Tech dot, working directly with property owners, providing incentives, rewriting code, and then helping that code get adopted, with potentially more code enforcement as well.
How much opportunity do we have for traffic calming on 121?
It depends on what your conversations with Tech dot are like, really. Yeah.
But it's, that's 100% Tech dot's space. We're not, we're, it's, they're not known for creating soft and cushy, walkable spaces, right?
Right, yeah. But there are opportunities because there's such a strong base for safety. I mean, in the process of the plan, there are more than a couple pedestrian fatalities.
Okay.
And we have several goals that we haven't much more to tell about those safety improvements to the actual streetscape roadway.
Well, I got them to change the Lake Lewisville signs to Lewisville Lake, so maybe we can get them to do some. We can throw some sharp elbows, but yeah, okay. Fair.
So that goes along with my question. What have we, throughout this process, have we had any coordination with Tech dot to know kind of what they're open to and what they're not open to? Because I know at one point, we talked about maybe lowering the speed limit on Business 121. I don't know if there are opportunities to, like the picture you showed, like making those pedestrian refuges in the medians, or, you know, if we're looking at crosswalks, all of that stuff. What are they, have we talked to them? What are they open to?
Great question.
Yes, so we have had a member on our corridor advisory committee from Tech dot, so he's been at, I think, the majority of the meetings. He was at our last one, where we presented a very similar presentation, so he's seen these draft recommendations. And so far, they haven't voiced at least any major concerns. I will say, we do have a meeting set up for later this month with some of the higher-up leadership at Tech dot. So before everything's finalized, we're going to present some of these key mobility recommendations to them to, just to get their thoughts before everything's finalized.
And as part of this plan, is the goal to get them to kind of lock into an agreement of we will allow these things, or is it really just something that we're going to have to pursue further down the road? We set our goals here based on what they say is realistic, but that may or may not be realistic based on when we get to it and actually ask permission.
Yeah, so I think this plan is a great opportunity to start these conversations with them. As long as the corridor is continued to be owned and maintained by Tech dot, the majority of the recommendations that you'll see and hear will need to be closely coordinated with Tech dot, but I think this is a good kind of launching point to work more closely with them. And Michaela alluded to this, you know, safety is one of Tech dot's top priorities as well. So in this plan, we did document some known safety issues. So I think that would be a win-win for the city and Tech dot to implement some near-term projects that directly address safety issues. So those could be some of those near-term strategies that are started.
Yeah, that's definitely the angle.
Yes, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The second of the goals is to create some of the stronger links between 121 and Old Town. You can see in the map, I've shown four main intersections where people stop at stoplights and they look at the property around them. And creating a stronger, what we'd say, four corners experience at those intersections by prioritizing streetscape improvements at those areas, knowing that Eight Mile over roadway is incredibly hard to fight Tech dot, but if you were able to make some improvements, I would say those are some really, already really strong corners that have a lot of benefit. And preserving some of the property with some public assistance and facade improvements targeted at those locations for future adaptive reuse, knowing that market potential's limited and the buildings are really in great quality. Those are some starting opportunities that build off of the strengths that the road has. The third, put together by our economic development consultants, is to improve the condition of housing stock. We think of it, of course, as an industrial residential corridor, because when the dominant, be dominant land use on the corridor is housing. And that's including within the 10-minute buffer, but also what's fronting, in many cases, directly on the roadway. And so we want to talk to residents more, because they were really eager to do so, about their experiences and the things that offered them quality of life, knowing that housing and affordability is one of those things. And so the recommendations here are really about having ongoing engagement, advocating for more housing on the corridor, for example, rezoning to legalize housing as an infill strategy, where there is demand for that. And then in addition to those recommendations here, improving the quality of housing and working with those property owners. There's also an opportunity for connecting the rest of the city together with Business 121. There's a demand and a need for healthy activities in open space, and if we were to ask how Business Corridor 121 can help support the big moves in Green Center piece, we could say potentially weaving back in the fabric of the city together so that, you know, where it goes north and south, you're also crossing east-west, which is what people want to do in many cases. And so in many ways, this is really about safety as well as open space, because where you're making connections at grade to more amenities and things that people are going to do recreationally, if that's a trail, or if that's a temporary playground or a permanent playground. If you think about it from Maslow's hierarchy, you need, you need that road to be safe before you really can successfully add those things. And then once you have a safer road where there's nearby amenities and people are on the road, then you can have a little bit of the cultural expression and the other fundamental parts of this plan that people were also eager to engage with, that play a meaningful role in transforming the property and appearance. So murals, landscaping, gateway signage, those are all some of the things that potentially working with local stakeholders and artists, or parks, landowners, the arts board, keeping that all together in view. I think the Florida Jimmy Buffett Road A1A was one of the examples of renaming, and that's come up more than a couple of times, for your consideration. And then enhancing existing commercial centers through adaptive reuse is one of our goals. That's really just about creating more mixed-use areas and relying a little bit less on one-story retail and thinking about the market potential for some of that housing. I think I said this a couple of times, but there's so much pent-up demand for housing on the corridor, and it is one opportunity to really bring life and mixed-use activity and some vibrancy onto the properties. And so what that will entail is monitoring the health of those commercial centers regularly, quarterly, and, again, updating some of those zonings that their future uses reflect what you want to see on the corridor, or in many cases, what's already there. And then finally, before I hand it back up to Kendall, building a sense of commercial vibrancy isn't just about transforming land, it's also continuing to support the efforts of economic development and engaging with the business and real estate community. Great work that we've already learned about is happening, but we want to also emphasize the need to build more temporary solutions, not just with like permanent brick-and-mortar retailers, but also folks who are starting out, who need pop-up spaces, and who need support from the business, from the city to build up a little bit more of a business community. I'm going to hand it back right here.
Thank you. All right, so the last four goals focus on the mobility aspects, and so we mentioned that safety was a key priority brought up through our existing conditions analysis, as well as all the engagement. So Goal 8 is the heftiest. There's, I think, almost 18 strategies. They vary from things like focusing on enhanced intersections to improve pedestrian and cyclist safety. So as part of the existing conditions assessment, we did a high-level intersection audit at each of the 15 signalized intersections along the corridor and documented some potential safety issues. So part of the strategies seek to address those issues, things like making it more ADA-friendly, as well as safer and more comfortable for non-motorized users. We also identified, there is a little bit longer stretch of the corridor where there is not a signalized intersection, so that's south of Bel Air and north of Southwest Parkway. So, and that is one of the most densely populated parts of the corridor, so if you've driven that parts really at any time of day, you've probably seen people darting across, which that's unsafe at any time, but especially at night along the corridor when there's no light. So that's definitely been identified as a critical need for figuring out some safer crossings in that area. People aren't going to want to walk, you know, half a mile or greater to a signalized intersection to cross safely if their destination is right across. So one of the strategies is looking at the feasibility of either a pedestrian bridge or potentially some sort of tunnel. Now, obviously, those are very expensive options, but putting an idea like that in the plan demonstrates the need and can start to continue those conversations with Tech dot. Just within the past, I think, month or so, there was another pedestrian fatality along the corridor. So just in the course of this project, I think there were two pedestrian fatalities or accidents along the corridor, so, and a lot of those within the past three years are within this corporate drive area. So looking at those types of safety recommendations, we also talk about potentially looking at adopting a Vision Zero policy. So there are other communities in the Dallas-Fort Worth region and across the country that have adopted a Vision Zero policy, so trying to work towards zero traffic dust, either automobile or other modes. So the Vision Zero platform has a lot of resources that communities can use to try to more effectively achieve that.
I think that's, I think the state and the COG are pushing that currently.
Yes, and the city of Dallas and Fort Worth both have adopted a Vision Zero policy as well.
And just to let the council know, we just got a grant that we're going to be working on, basically that is one of the topics of the topic analysis, kind of plan for our city.
The safe streets for all. That's great. So Goal 9 is focused on addressing access management. So if you recall from our existing conditions analysis, there are a lot of driveways and curb cuts along the corridor, nearly 200 along the Eight Mile stretch, which, you know, is common, given that there are so many commercial properties. But given that there's not a dedicated right, current lane for the majority of the corridor, it does cause backups of traffic and of potential safety issues as well. And so this is an opportunity to work with Tech dot on both access management and curb management, to see if there's potential to consolidate some driveways some may not be used, some properties may have multiple access points where really they just need one. And so this is an opportunity to work with those property owners, as well as Tech dot, to better balance access management with the flow of traffic.
Is that relatively easy? Is that a potential taking? What do we look at when we're dealing with that?
I wouldn't say it's easy, but Tech dot's curb management is a, it's definitely on Tech dot's radar, so there are other communities that have worked closely with Tech dot to try to implement some best practices, but it will involve, you know, close coordination with property owners as well. And, you know, the Unified Development Code does, that was adopted a few years ago, for any new development or redevelopment, the Unified Development Code does require cross-access easements between properties, so that's a great step in the right direction. The issue is all of those existing properties that aren't being redeveloped.
Okay.
So do we have any idea, with the existing development, is there, do any of them have existing access easements, or are they all just kind of their own little, you know, kingdom, and they all have their own separate access?
So it varies greatly. Many of them don't have actual easements, but there's plenty of, there's examples where there's a property, it's one business, but they've got, you know, two or three driveways. So talking with them about how do we consolidate this, explaining the safety case for their customers and patrons, that sort of thing. We've also got business owners that I know want to consolidate and combine driveways, and it's just more about how do I do this kind of thing? And if we can assist them, you know, that's a pretty easy win there. So it varies greatly. I know there's some property owners out there that won't, that they love those driveways and every one, even though the ones they don't use, they think are very valuable to them. So it's going to be case by case.
Okay.
All right. The next goal is focused on traffic flow improvements, trying to make traffic more predictable. So this is actually a recent aerial image of corporate drives. So you can see all the traffic backing up there, heading northbound. And this is, you know, a pretty common occurrence, particularly around the I-35E intersection, where you have a dense concentration of signalized intersections, you may have to wade through multiple light cycles. And so some of the recommendations, excuse me, related to this goal are things like a a signal progression study. The city does control traffic signals, so there are some tweaks that could be made along the corridor after a signal progression study. Also, the city does work with NCT-COG on a lot of initiatives, and they have a pretty robust intelligent transportation systems program, so looking at implementing those features to integrate technology, smart signals, that sort of thing. And then potentially, I guess, through this group and as part of other conversations, there's been kind of a desire expressed or interest expressed in creating more of a boulevard feel for the portion of the corridor south of 35 and then north of FM 30-40 round road. So if that's, if that were to move forward, another strategy in this goal is looking at lowering the speed limit in that area to create more of that boulevard feel. Goal 11 is looking at bollard necks. So particularly during peak travel times, busy time of day, there are some significant bollard necks in the corridor, one area being the very southwestern end as you head towards, heads towards the airport. So some strategies look at kind of a lighter touch strategy would be exploring a dedicated U-turn lane so folks are able to travel more free-flowing as they go south on the Business 121 frontage roads. And then a much higher touch, higher impact option could be looking at or exploring actually depressing the main lanes of Business 121 south of FM 30-40. There is precedent of Tech Dot doing that elsewhere in the region as part of the DFW Connector Project in Grapevine. The main lanes of FM 2499 near Grapevine Mills Mall were depressed, and so the frontage roads are at grade and have the signalized intersections. But if you're just passing through, you stay on the depressed main lane, so it helps with traffic there. So south of FM 30-40, you have High Point Oaks Drive, which is a signal, and then Vista Ridge slash Edmonds, which is another signal. So tends to back up during, especially during peak periods.
Do we know, is Business 121 on Tech Dot's, I guess, quote-unquote CIP list to be rebuilt anytime in the near future?
So the only, I was just looking at this. Yeah, it's on its pavement management.
Pavement management and preventative maintenance plan.
Preventative maintenance.
For the immediate future.
Yeah, so that would just be, you know, fixing, fixing loopholes, repairing.
So if we wanted to explore something like that, it would be kind of on us, right?
RTC and cog.
Yeah, the cog would be a great partner to try to involve in that. But currently, Business 121, any reconstruction of it is not in, on Tech Dot's radar.
That would be something very long-term, like a 20-year time, but you have to start somewhere with the idea. That's what we're planting that seed now. There could be opportunities of years for funding as other big projects get done, but Tech Dot doesn't really look that far. They look about five years. So it's really our job, at least having it planned, if there is a grant or, you know, some money that we could compete for, at least we can say that for 20 years, we've identified this as a problem, and it will get worse because traffic will grow.
Oh, of course. I'm just curious if they had something coming up in the near term, like in the next five years, where we could say, oh, hey, you know, thought about doing this?
Grapevine identified their issue decades ago. They were patient, but they had it in their plans, and when the opportunity presented itself, they were ready.
And then the last goal is looking at exploring alternative roadway sections along certain parts of the corridor. So I alluded to this earlier, the idea of transitioning the corridor south of, between 35 and 30-40 into more of a boulevard feel. That's already where you have your denser residential and commercial areas, as well as more pedestrian and other users. So the idea of slowing down traffic a little bit, changing the street scape would be a big change. But again, as Richard alluded to, this is planting the seed, and, you know, it's reflective of a lot of the input that we heard to try to transition that section of the corridor into more of a boulevard. So looking at things like definitely taking out a lane, slowing down the traffic, and then prioritizing including both pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. So before we, we've got about 20 minutes left. The discussion part today, I'll just run through this slide, and then we can open it up for discussion. The packet that you have in front of you represents all of the implementation strategies that are in the draft plan. So under those 12 goals that we just went over, it's a series of strategies. And so the implementation parameters include timeframes. We have short, medium, and long-term timeframes. Order of magnitude cost. You'll see that high is greater than $500,000, but if you saw some of our recommendations, we know that some of those would be much, much, much higher than that. So there are some strategies, particularly in the mobility section, where we've listed it as to be determined by future study, and it would be understood that it's much higher than that, greater than 500,000 category. And then the other parameters, I mentioned the key themes, which are economic vitality, mobility, and quality of place. So the individual strategy could be related to any one of those. And then some of these strategies are applicable to the entire corridor, some are applicable to one or more of the five sub-areas that we've studied as part of this process. And then we also look at who are potential partners or support that could play a role in helping to implement the strategy. So what we have in front of you today are the draft implementation strategies, and then the ones that are rolled with the purple arrow next to it are the ones that we're currently highlighting as priority. So we've reviewed this with the corridor advisory committee and incorporated their feedback, but we want to get council and planning zoning commissions feedback as well. So essentially, of all the strategies that are listed under each goal, are we identifying the right strategies that you think should be prioritized in the near term? So I think what I'll do is I'll just run through each goal. So Goal 1, the, please feel free to provide your input. The 3, 4 that we have identified as high priority is 1.2, which is looking at continuing the commercial facades program. 1.4 is looking at activating underutilized land, such as parking lots with pop-ups and programming. 1.8 is filling gaps in the streetlight network with lights for cars and people. And then 1.12 is enforce code violations and conduct quarterly fees to the incentivized property owners. So any thoughts on?
So I have a question about the 1 point, the activity that underutilized lands, such as, you know, with pop-ups and programming. Is that something that we're, I mean, that would be something that we would want, maybe partner with them to get started, but that's not something that we would be involved with managing that kind of stuff long-term, right? The programming of those spaces?
Yeah, so we've actually talked to a few of the different shopping center owners that have the larger parking lots, and they're open to doing kind of a demonstration project, and we'd partner with them definitely to do one or two to kind of kick it off and kind of let them know what we're thinking, and hopefully they could take the ball and run with it, or some other organization could. But we've looked into participating in like a parking day type event, which is in the fall. We're going to do something hopefully in the spring with one of the shopping centers on the corridor to just activate that parking lot space for a while to kind of demonstrate what could be done with it, and hopefully bring a lot of people to the shopping center on a temporary basis, and that's something the shopping center management could be interested in. And then you can talk about more regular items like a farmer's market or something like that. There's some spaces that might be conducive for that, and that's not something we would necessarily want to manage as city staff, but we'd certainly want to help get kicked off and get started.
Okay.
Great question. Talk about the owners of the three, I guess, catalytic, is what we call them sites. How much detail have you shared with them, and how receptive have they been to the changes?
Yeah, so we invited property owners to our second round of stakeholder sessions, which were in June.
They haven't been particularly responsive, to be honest with you. So I'm not sure what their thoughts are, but when there's time and they're looking to sell and redevelop, we'll certainly talk to them about kind of our vision and what it is. And some of the shopping center owners are definitely on board with like the interim temporary pop-up type things, and we've talked to them about that.
Are most of these landowners, are they local guys that own this property and these shopping centers, or do we have, you know, bigger developers involved who tend to, you know, try to insert themselves a lot more than, say, the local guy who owns, you know, a retail space out there?
Sure, so a lot of them are owned by local firms, but they're generally investment-type firms that are holding it for just to collect rents and that sort of thing.
Other questions?
I'd like to give a little bit of feedback on this. Goal 1 and Goal 6 both have some overlap to me on the UDC and reduced parking requirements. I think if we're going to be doing these pop-up kinds of activities or coming in and saying, hey, we want to show you what it could look like, I think we also need to be able to tell them, look, you can remove 20 parking spots because the UDC has changed that. These folks don't know that. They have no idea that the UDC has changed, that they have land sitting available that they could repurpose. And I think we need to be able to go to them and say, you can free up 20 parking spots. We'd love to explore a public-private partnership where we could create green space with you, maybe get you a facade grant or a space improvement grant to create that, but we want these 20 spots here. And we're going to show you what that looks like by bringing in this group. I think if you just bring in a group and do that and then say, hey, you could do this too, I don't know if that, I don't know if that gets them there. I think, much like the mall, we have broken the mall down into nine components, I think it was. Instead of having one developer come in and do the whole thing, we broke it down into bite-sized pieces. I think you got to do that with these other developers too, because these investors aren't, I don't think they're going to see it, and I don't think they have a good understanding that the UDC has opened up value for them. So lead, drag them to the water.
Have you the right conversations at the right people for the right?
But I'd love to see us explore how do we create maybe public-private amenities with that facade grant, or how can we, you know, how do we, if we want more green space down there, we may have to pay for it, but then they're going to be maintaining it, so.
Any other thoughts on Goals 1? Okay, so Goal 2, create highlight links between the different zones. And so the priority strategy under this one is 2.3, just focus public realm and street scape enhancement enhancements on major connecting streets such as Mill Street and Railroad.
With the improvements in the Mill Street area, how much do we need to know about the traffic patterns and the traffic loading to understand what we're potentially taking away and where it may be displaced to in terms of people who were using 121 as a thoroughfare as opposed to a unique place?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I think with the Mill Street realignment project that, that is doing, yeah, I'm sure they've looked at the traffic patterns there.
Yeah, and so Mill Street, and I mean, that is, moving Mill Street northward is to help with the traffic patterns because the intersection right now is too close to 35. So moving it northward lines it up with the intersection to the Mobile Home Park, or the entrance to the Mobile Home Park. And it also allows for a lot of redevelopment opportunity that's kind of on the northwest side.
So do we think it would open it up or slow it down?
It should help alleviate some of the bottlenecks between the lights and the congestion that's flowing there, but that is a Tech Dot project to move that. And I think we're trying to piggyback off of that construction happening so that we can really show, because when you drive by Mill Street today, you don't realize that Old Town is to the north. So like, how do we let people in Business 121 know that, hey, if you go north here, you will get to a special place?
So that redevelopment there with Tech Dot, it's obviously, it's super confusing. If you don't know that area, you're coming off that street, it's like, okay, which one do I take here? So is that going to be, I assume, much better now with what Tech Dot's going to do?
Yeah, the current configuration, the intersection, is very confusing currently.
Yes.
I agree with that.
And there's a light right there technically. If you don't pay attention to the light, it's, so it's.
Some of the people don't know what to do with that light.
Yeah, that will get reconfigured. Mill Street will move farther north. It should be much easier to navigate through there after they're done with their intersection.
It's a perfect area to tag on to with what we're doing.
So just one clarification, are we, is the kind of the catalytic development that we're talking about here, is that included in this, or is this kind of a separate item? It's more of a short-term, in the short-term interim, we're looking at kind of changing up the street scape at Mill?
So kind of peppered throughout the overall implementation plan are strategies that help to, would help to implement the vision at the catalytic sites. So I think this one is related to that Mill Street scenario, but then it also kind of takes a broader look at those other nearby intersections that can serve as a gateway into Old Town, such as Main and Railroad.
The big difference here is the catalytic site focuses really on what that land use on that private property might be moving forward, and here we're talking about what's in the public realms and what's in the Mill Street right away, and that's great because that's what we can do.
Yeah, I think, I think focus on wayfinding is what I see as the goal here. What that wayfinding looks like doesn't have to necessarily be a sign, but definitely, I do it all the time. I forget that Railroad Street goes through, or I forget that Valley Ridge comes through, or I, you know, I'm just, I get stuck on Main. I'm like, oh, I could have done this 14 different faster ways. And so I think wayfinding down there is key to making that all work.
I mean, I wouldn't necessarily be pushing traffic down Railroad Street, though. That's a.
No, but to let people know, let people know, hey, you've got Old Town over here.
Yeah, I see that at Mill. At Railroad Street, that's.
See, I'd love it at Railroad Street because all of those folks get done with sports thing, and they're like, we got to go somewhere to eat. We need to take our kids to somewhere to grab an after-game snack or whatever and get them coming to Old Town. I think that's a great thing.
Yeah, true.
Maybe not Railroad Street, but somewhere, some sort of connectivity. I think there's a, there's a lot of economic value that we can uncap because Railroad Park just sits there by itself.
It does. But yeah, I mean, I, coming through, if you come straight through Railroad across 121, that's not, I mean, that sends you through the back of an industrial area that doesn't really necessarily set the tone that we want.
That's fair.
So.
Will change.
But it smells delicious.
I mean, not always, but it does smell delicious.
When you get off the train, it does.
So anyhow, I think this is, this is fine.
Remember our TOD vision plan of that area. Continue reinvents it, and then it would be a very great additional gateway into Old Town connecting to Railroad Park.
I agree.
Housing affordability, there's a lot of little steps to get there.
Yeah, Goal 3, looking at priority strategies for 3.1, continuing conversations about housing affordability needs. And then 3.8, executive field assessment of housing inventory along the corridor, identify priority investment areas.
Yeah, the line improved.
Any thoughts there? Okay. Goal 4, priority strategy 4.1, align the citywide efforts to increase green spaces and recreational opportunities along the corridor. So in the plan document itself, we do have a map of both the existing and planned park and trail facilities or amenities within the area, and looking at how can we better connect those amenities. All right, Goal 5. All right. Goal five, 5.1, is focused on enhancing small and large gateways into Louisville. And then goal six, we have 6.2, identify, incentivize and fill up underperforming commercial centers through strategic investments.
Do we have a feel for the life cycle stage on a lot of the commercial developments out there, a lot of them, in my opinion, are at the point where they may need major reconstruction? And with that, that may reveal a lot of opportunity to incorporate capital improvements to really take advantage of that situation?
Yeah, so as part of the market assessment that our partners did, they did take a look at some of the major shopping centers. I do think they considered the age of the centers. So yeah, that's definitely a component, particularly in the catalytic sites like Lakeland and Bel Air. Just from a vacancy perspective, there's tons of vacancy in those catalytic sites.
Just from the looks of the parking lots, a lot of the underground utilities must be in equally bad shape.
No issue there.
All right. Goal seven, we have two identified here. 7.2, continue to undertake active business development efforts. So any for grocery store was discussed as part of this process. We wanted to make sure we tie that in here. And then 7.4, update zoning on corridor parcels to better reflect future desired conditions. So that's a rather specific one. There are some parcels along the corridor that are currently and have been serving as commercial, neighborhood commercial uses, but they're currently zoned as industrial. So just kind of looking to change that zoning to better reflect the current and intended future uses.
It makes sense.
Okay. Any more discussion on goal eight? We've got address any compliance issues, and then building sidewalk gaps, develop the safety action plan, which you'll be able to check off soon because you received the funding for the Save Streets For All. So that was to conduct a safety...
And that should unlock some of those Tech Stop conversations, which is good.
Is there any discussion for 2013, a law 121 connecting the two sites together there near the elementary school? That would take Tech Stop right in the middle of it, wouldn't it? I mean, there's nothing we can do there to make that any better.
At the least, you'd have to put in a Hawk crossing.
And try and get people to stop.
Yeah.
Right? That's the, that's what, at least, that's all we can do really.
And that's, yeah, and that's still, that still turns on Tech Stop.
Yeah, and with the current traffic volumes and speed, a Hawk signal wouldn't be recommended. So that's why we looked at, you know, potential for pedestrian bridge and that.
Roll up strips.
Okay, so goal nine is 9.1, partner with Tech Stop on curb in the trenches for consolidating driveways and median break toward feasible. Yes. And then goal 10, we have conduct a signal progression study, and then utilize advanced transportation management systems and ITS throughout the corridor to improve traffic flow.
I think that would be huge to help reduce some of the hostility on that corridor.
I was going to say, council, you put aside money, funded that progression study for this.
I want to make one comment, but it doesn't seem to be addressed, but you guys talked about it a little bit earlier about turning it into a boulevard. The reason it is 121 business, it is not 121. It is 121 business. That is because they wanted to create an off loop of the high-speed 121 so that businesses could thrive. So if 121 is a rocket business, is a rocket raceway, it's not doing what it's supposed to be doing. And I think that's a really good argument to talk to Tech Stop about, is that the purpose of a business loop is to encourage business, and that means it's a slower pace. And I think you can get traction on that, because it's not 121.
That's a great point.
And to that point, too, I look at West Main as a comparison, it's the exact same cross-section. It has a high school, a lot of pedestrians, but it has a whole different feel. It operates differently. It has different signal spacing, but we could use that as an example.
I think there's a really good argument for the boulevard.
Any other thoughts on priorities?
I think the college is actually doing something with signal, giving out grants for...
Yeah, they're doing smart signals grants.
So, I mean, a lot of, everything on here I've seen is...
There's conversation, yeah, lots of conversation with the card and the RTC to be had in here on safety and signalization and the progression, that kind of thing. They want to create a smart grid throughout the whole West Flex, and so we can help them with that. Any other comments before we have to step away for our P&amp;Z friends to make their seven o'clock? All right, well, since counsel, I don't have any other comments, and we have no further action to be taken, so.
Do you need to finish your presentation?
Are we good?
Yeah, this is just next steps.
Okay, next steps there?
We'll refine recommendations for it, and then come back to these groups later in the fall.
Okay. My apologies for cutting that short.
Thank you.
Other questions? We got about four minutes for the P&amp;Z. None? I have no further action to be taken, therefore the Louisville City Council stands adjourned.
It is seven o'clock. I call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. First order of business, a quorum is present, and we need approval of minutes. Commissioners, additions or corrections?
Move to approve.
Second.
I'm not even signed in yet. Hold on. Motion by Aram, seconded by Francesca. Vote now, please. Motion is approved, seven to zero. That leads us to regular hearings. The first regular hearing is a final plat of runtime center addition, lot one, block A, on 1.056 acres out of the Jesse Sutton survey, abstract 1155, and the E. Pickett survey, abstract 1014, zoned light industrial district located at 702 South Stemmons Freeway, 2411 F.P.
Good evening, commissioners. Staff reviewed this final plat and found a list of deficiencies. Staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend denial of this plat and give staff the authority to approve it once all the listed deficiencies have been corrected.
Commissioners, questions, comments? Entertain a motion?
I make a motion to disapprove the final plat due to the deficiencies and delegate to the staff the authority to accept and approve the plat when deficiencies are corrected.
Motion by Francesca, seconded by Rick. Vote now. Motion carries seven zero. The next regular hearing is a preliminary plat of discovery of the realm phase 15, containing 87 townhouse lots, three open space lots, and two multifamily lots on 21.996 acres, excuse me, out of the A Singleton survey, abstract 1138, and the Benjamin Schooner survey, abstract 1209, zoned planned development multifamily three, PD MF three district, with a proposed zoning of planned development multifamily three, PD MF three, and planned development townhouse, PD TH district, located south of Lady Betty Drive, north of Lady Tassala Avenue, and east of Essex Boulevard, 24095 PP.
Commissioners, this preliminary plat is associated with the Council Hill's PD amendment that came before you back on October, sorry, August 6th. The PD amendment is still going through the public hearing process and has yet to have a final decision by city council. And because of this, the plat that was submitted will likely change a great deal. A lot of staff's comments on this were associated with the pending PD amendment. Staff recommends disapproval of this plat for all of the comments that were made, and recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission give staff the ability to approve it once all of those comments have been corrected. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this.
Can I ask a question?
Commissioners, questions?
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So that has to be approved by council prior to even it coming back to be reviewed or to be approved?
Right.
Approved. So the planned development needs to be approved by council?
Yeah.
They went ahead and kind of at their risk, went ahead and took a next step. Obviously, we can't approve this plat if it doesn't align with the zoning. So we will just continue making the comment that this doesn't align with the zoning until it does align with the zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion disapprove the preliminary plat due to deficiencies and delegate staff the authority to accept and approve the plat when deficiencies are corrected.
Motion by Ainsley, seconded by Jack. Vote now. Motion carries seven zero. Number four, final plat of First Park 121 addition, lots 1A and 5, block A, on 48.328 acres out of the Samuel M. Hayden survey, abstract number 537, zoned light industrial, LI, district, located at and adjacent to 2001 Midway Road and 527 Holfords Prairie Road, being a replat of the First Park addition, lot one, block A, and a 28.471 acre tract of land out of the Samuel Hayden survey, abstract number 537, 24096 RP.
Good evening, commissioners. The replat of First Park 121 addition was submitted on September 16th, 2024, and has been reviewed by staff. Staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission disapprove the replat of First Park 121 addition for the deficiencies listed, and delegate to staff the authority to accept and approve the plat once the listed deficiencies are corrected. The approved plat will be brought to the chair for signature.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to disapprove the final plat due to deficiencies and delegate to staff the authority to accept and approve once deficiencies are corrected.
Second.
Motion by Aram, seconded by Francesca. Vote now. Motion carries seven zero. Number five, final plat of Verona addition, lot 29R1 and 29R2, block A, on .354 acres out of the F. Pierce survey, abstract number 1016, zone estate townhouse residential, ETH district, located at 216 Milano Drive, being a replat of Verona addition, lot 29, block A, 2492 MP.
Good evening, commissioners. This replat was submitted on September 16th of 2024 and has been reviewed by staff. Staff recommends that you disapprove the replat of the Verona addition, lots 29R1 and R2, for the deficiencies listed, and delegate to staff the authority to accept and approve the plat once the listed deficiencies are corrected.
Commissioners, questions?
Yes.
Comments?
Question. Is this currently zoned as you might have already stated? Is it zoned townhouse or single-family residential?
It's zoned estate townhouse, so it's not like, it's not attached townhomes. It's just a smaller lot size.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that.
Other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to disapprove the final plat due to deficiencies and delegate to staff the authority to accept and approve the plat when deficiencies are correct.
Motion by Rick, seconded by Ainsley. Vote now. Motion carries seven zero. Number six, final plat of Valley Ridge addition, phase four, lots 1R through 1B1, block A, on 3.1549 acres out of the Levi N. Sparks survey, abstract number 1135, zoned medical district, MD, located on the south side of Valley Ridge Boulevard, approximately 400 feet east of North Garden Ridge Boulevard, and on the east side of North Garden Ridge Boulevard, approximately 300 feet south of Valley Ridge Boulevard, being a replat of Valley Ridge addition, phase four, lots 1R through 1B and 1R through 1C, block A, 24097 RP.
As noted, this plat was submitted on September 16th of 2024, and has been reviewed by staff. Staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission disapprove the replat of the Valley Ridge addition, lot 1R1B1, for the deficiencies listed, and delegate to staff the authority to accept and approve the plat once the deficiencies are corrected.
Questions, commissioners, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to disapprove the final plat due to deficiencies and delegate to staff the authority to accept and approve the plat when deficiencies are corrected.
Motion by Rick, seconded by Ainsley. Vote now. Motion carries seven zero. That moves on to public hearings. Our first public hearing tonight is a consideration of a special use permit for a gasoline service station located at 751 West Main Street on 10.5078 acres, legally described as lot 4-r1r, block C of Valley Ridge Business Park West, zoned general business district as requested by Ryan Alvarez, Kim Lee Horn, and Associates on behalf of Walmart stores, number 18-6381, the property owner, case number 2405-6SUP.
Good evening, commissioners. Walmart Inc. is requesting an SUP for a gasoline service station so that it can expand its Sam's Club gas station located on the southeast portion of their property. The point of the expansion is to add two more fuel dispensers, and they plan on expanding their canopy to cover all of the fueling area. They also plan on restriping their queuing lanes and to improve the flow of traffic in that area. Additionally, as a part of the SUP, they will be bringing the site up to current UDC standards as well as for the I-35 overlay district.
as well as for the I-35 overlay district, which includes adding new landscaping, using upgraded materials, particularly on their columns, using brick and stone there, and let's see what else. And as mentioned, improving the queuing and traffic flow.
Questions, commissioners?
Staff recommends that the planning and zoning commission recommend approval for the special use permit as presented in the caption.
Sorry, I slipped on you there.
No worries.
Commissioners, questions?
Just, I have a comment. Thank you for having to do that, because it's...
Much needed.
Yes, it's very much needed.
Good. I will open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak, come forward, please. State your name and your address, please. We'd be happy to hear from you. With no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please do.
I'm looking at the site plan, and I get gas at this gas station all the time, so I understand that there's a definite traffic problem here, but I'm still seeing like two southbound and two northbound parking aisles just north when everything is like southbound coming through. So, it's sheet number C5 that I'm specifically looking at.
Give us just a minute to get on the same page.
Yes, yes, that one.
And you're talking about specifically on that left-hand side?
On the north side, you have a northbound parking aisle, but then your, all your entry is southbound into that new segment. So, and then you're, I mean additionally, you still have another northbound parking aisle on that far right side, and once again, it's all southbound inflow to the gas station.
Are you, are you asking, Ainsley, are they going to redo that?
Is this the final part of this, or is this just a part of the, is this part of the SUP approval process?
So, this is, this is the final plans that they submitted for this area. So, the, yeah, as you stated, it'll flow through here, and then there's the drive aisle of the exit here.
You're speaking of the area, Ainsley, up there where it says general business?
Yeah, because I, I come to this, and so I get gas once a week, and I just don't, I just don't under, I'm not understanding how this is improving traffic flow in this parking lot.
So, they're trying to, to kind of create more of a flow for the gas station itself. So, this, this on here is an exit only. So, what they're trying to get all of the traffic to do is come, if you're coming around this way, to come in through here and then turn into your lane. Now, these are still open for people to go drive and park to visit the Sam's Club, right? So, this is the lane you might be coming up from the Sam's Club, but the goal is to get most of the traffic with these arrows to come around this side, to go south through, and then to come out the south side.
Yeah. I, it just, it always backs up into those parking aisles. It doesn't matter if you're coming from the south or from the north. I always come from the north, and you still have kind of a contradiction, and it just becomes an absolute cluster trying to figure out who's going what direction. So, in my mind, this doesn't ease or help alleviate traffic flow in this parking lot.
I think it's like that in any Costco or Sam's. Quite frankly, no matter what state I've been at where they have these gas stations, it's like that.
A big part of the issue also is that people just have, I've noticed, because I go there several times a week, that's my dedicated gas station, and people have their favorite pump that they want to go to, and it's always that far right one, that first one, and it doesn't matter what side your gas tank is on, people don't realize, you can go to the other one, and the hose stretches and will come to your other side.
Yeah.
Because that left side of that first bay is always empty, and the right side has cars backed up all the way into, like you're saying, the Sam's aisle. So, maybe reconfiguring like with big arrows and will...
I think if anything, their purpose is just to add additional pumps so that we, that the folks are there can go in and get out.
Yeah. I think additional pumps, Ainsley could work to alleviate a lot of the frustration that you're seeing that we all...
Because then otherwise, I think it would, we would still have the same traffic, but then we would, it would go on to the main street, which is why I don't think we want that traffic to go through the main street.
Well, pretty much, and off, well off the main street, it's just, like I said, that it just, it all starts backing up, like it'll start backing up into the northbound, and to me, it doesn't seem like the most efficient way of doing that. Yes, I agree that the additional gas pumps is needed, but I'm, I'm just not a fan of the traffic flow proposed.
I think another element that we need to point out is the fact that they are adding islands really on the east and the west sides, because right now, you're getting a lot of traffic. It's all wide open. So, you get people coming from all different directions, going different directions, and creating a lot of conflicts. So, what they're really trying to do is channeling everyone to come in from the north, and then your only exit is that area on the, on the southern boundary there where that opening is in that median. It still will probably back up to the north, but it's better to back up to the north and queue there so that they can orderly go out on the south.
Well, so then, but you have two of the, they're, you're supposed to go northbound to go into that, those parking aisles on the first one and then the third one. So, those are supposed to be northbound parking lanes, but yet we want people to go southbound into the gas station.
Yeah.
That's a good point, yeah. Those are some points.
So, 50% of your parking aisles are still going the wrong direction.
Yeah.
That's where my heartache comes in.
I think, I mean, there's still the same separation from the pumps, and so you might still have that, but hopefully, just the addition of the two additional pumps relieves a lot of the queuing or some of the queuing. I also think that by making folks come in from kind of that northeast side, you're going to hopefully create a little bit more of a regular pattern so that folks are kind of in that east-west drive-out. Now, the rest of the parking lot is the standard Walmart kind of Sam's Club parking lot where they do the one-way and the angled, and so it's a difficult transition to go from the gas station back to that parking lot, and I'm not sure that there's a better solution to manage that.
I'm just thinking of the people that come in to go northbound to park, but now they're having to contend with gas station tra, I don't know. To me, it just doesn't, it doesn't, I don't know.
So, the folks coming into the Walmart site will be kind of coming in, and this is, they're going up and down the rows looking for parking. They still have ability to maneuver on the north side of the gas station side if they're going up and down looking for parking.
I do think the barrier along the west side, where they've extended it out a little bit, will make things a bit easier, because the people won't be cutting through quite so soon.
Yeah.
Now that I've seen it, I can't unsee it in terms of, let's flip the script a little bit and say, the use of the parking heading northbound into the Sam's main entrance, you're, the only way to get cars to go into that aisle of parking right now, as shown, is through the gas station. That's, I think, the conflict in terms of, you've got the very deliberate directional control in the gray area of the arrows pointing southbound. So, if I was going to be going to Sam's, and I was going to that, at the end of that row, I believe there's a lot of ADA parking, so if you wanted to get to that ADA parking close to the entrance, you would want to go up that aisle. And right now, you would either be going northbound through the gas station from Main Street, or you'd be cycling through where, Michelle, you're describing, that east side and looping around, and then instead of going to the gas station, you'll proceed to the end, to that new island, and take a right to go northbound again. It seems to be a lot of maneuvers. It might, and I understand the desire to maintain as many parking places as possible, but if that's the flow to come in from the northeast at the top of the, the gas station area, could you literally have a north, I mean, it's not up to us, but the flow of that by separating the parking lot from the flow to the, the gas pumps would seem to be called for, or at least investigated.
That would work, yeah.
But we don't have any say-so. We don't have any say-so in that, so. That's going to be, with the amount of queues on days where the gas prices spike, that's going to be a really interesting experience getting gas and, or going into Sam's to get to those ADA parking areas. I think that's where they are.
But us not approving this SUP is not going to change any of that.
No.
I mean, it's going to be the same whether, whether this gets approved or not.
That's true.
And, you know, in my mind, if it creates that much problem, go somewhere else. I mean, if you have that much trouble getting in and out of there.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, they're not the only gas station in town.
I think another challenge to laying out this site and making improvements is the fact that you do have islands that are already angled. It makes it very difficult to redesign and, and almost impossible to reverse traffic flow. And I know most large retailers such as Sam's have a formula for parking spaces, and, and they do use, I was just looking at the aerial, though, the bulk of the parking is further west. The parking just north of this fuel station, I think the cause of the presence of the fuel station is much lighter as far as parking, at least when the aerial photograph was taken. And I think once it's, you know, once this area is expanded and reconfigured, I think still people will gravitate away from that and park more. Very good point about the handicap, but I think there's, if there's not solid continuous parked vehicles, they can, a lot of people will cut across striped spaces to get to those, so. But I think the more able-bodied folks who do not need the handicap parking will, will choose to park maybe closer with that, where the exit is to the building, which is further west of this location. Because I believe they've tried to improve it to the greatest extent that they possibly could, given the, the parameters and the constraints on the site.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
Have we heard from any citizens regarding the special use change?
Yes, we did receive one call just out of interest, and one explained they were, you know, they were okay with it. They were like, cool.
Good question. Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
Recommend approval of special use permit as presented.
Second.
Can we, first, did we open and close the public hearing?
I did close it.
Oh, sorry, my bad.
I thought I closed it.
You did.
Motion by Aram, seconded by Francesca. Motion passes seven zero.
Commissioners, this item will be considered by the city council for a second public hearing and a final decision on Monday, November the 18th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Last public hearing, a public hearing consideration of a zone change from agricultural open space, AO district, to light industrial district on 4.909 acres out of the P Higgins survey abstract 525, located on 610 Holfords Prairie Road, as requested by Ali Rez Ravjani, and if I mispronounced that, I'm sorry, the property owner, 24-08-8Z.
Good evening, commissioners. This property off of Holfords Prairie Road has been used for many years as a single-family residential unit. It's zoned agricultural open and was likely annexed into the city with that zoning. The applicant is looking to rezone both this, both parcels you see here, into light industrial zoning. Their intent is to have an office warehouse development. Surrounding this property, we have the Metro Auction to the north. To the west is a property that's owned by Republic Services or maintained by them, but then to the north is a residential subdivision. I will note that, for the most part, the zoning does conform to the use of surrounding it. If a light industrial use has developed here, they would have to have an eight-foot screening wall and a landscape buffer between the use and that residential development to the south. Staff feels this is in line with our big move of employment centers. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Comment? If not, I will open the public hearing. Public hearing is opened. If you wish to speak, please come forward and state your name and your address. We would like, we would be happy to hear from you. Were there any public comments?
None that I am aware of.
Having no one come forward, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions? Comments?
Yes. You had stated that since that is a resident, there are residents south of that on Oak, Oak Tree Lane.
Yes.
I guess those are currently zoned agricultural open space also.
That's correct.
But people are living there.
Yes. So, agricultural open is a residential, can be used, single-family residential isn't allowed use in that, so we do see it as a residential use, in particular, when you have people living in it.
Okay, so when they develop this, it will, they will be required to have that screening wall and distance?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's why I mentioned that there would be a screening wall and a 10-foot landscape buffer and a tree every 40 feet on that southern boundary.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Further questions?
I, just real quick, I'm sorry. The people in those houses back there, they would have all received a notice advising of the zone change and, and an opportunity to speak up if they think, you know, they don't...
Yes, sir. We send out notices to every property owner within 200 feet, so they all would have received a letter from us.
And we didn't get anything back?
Not, nothing that I heard. Did you get anything back?
I have, no.
So, no, and no, nothing through email, you've heard?
Thank you.
Then I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to recommend approval of the zone change as presented.
Motion by Francesca, seconded by Rick. You may vote now. Motion carries seven to zero.
Commissioners, this item will be considered by the city council, who will hold a second public hearing and make a final decision on Monday, November the 18th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Any announcements?
I just wanted to announce that this week is the state planning conference, so planning staff will be attending that conference later this week, and I believe we have some commissioners that have signed up, so just a reminder, you should have received the emails about parking and everything else. If you're planning on attending and have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us and let us know. We're happy to help out in any way we can.
Excellent. Thank you. With that, I will consider a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Aram, seconded by Ainsley. Seven zero, we are adjourned.